Welcome. Welcome. Are we ready? Okay. Welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting. Normally, I would ask you to silence your cellphones at this moment to the few people here. So this is an unusual city council meeting. We have four council members that are here. Vijay Kapoor and our Vice Mayor Gwen Whistler and Julie Mayfield. And we have three more on the phone. Brian Haynes, Keith Young, and Shanika Smith. We have just a few staff here in the council chambers sitting socially distant from one another. And we are going to proceed by rising and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And we need to remove item-
P.
-P to be considered separately. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda without item P?
So moved.
And I'll second, but I have a comment about-
Here, do your mic like right, right there.
I'll second, but I have a comment on item N. Should I do that now?
Yes.
Okay. So this is an item that allocates $100,000 of Housing Trust Fund money to a new and really exciting voucher program aimed at getting more private landlords to offer affordable housing. And that's, that's a good thing. Folks may remember that at our, I don't think it was our, well, maybe it was our last meeting. We, in the, in connection with the approval of the Radlofts, the developer there agreed to fund this program and help fund the Asheville-Bunkham Community Land Trust. Because of the economic situation that we're in, those payments may not come as early as we had anticipated, as early as we had expected. And so we're fixing that in this way for, for the voucher program. And I'd just like to ask the city manager if, if she and the community development staff could look for some funds, either from the Housing Trust Fund or another housing-related fund to, that would, that could go to the Asheville-Bunkham Community Land Trust.
Okay. Okay, any other comments regarding the motion to approve the consent agenda? Anyone on the phone? There's a little bit of a delay, so we just have to wait a moment. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes. Now for item P.
So Mayor, I ask that this item be pulled just to ask the city manager to expound on it a little bit. Basically, it's authorizing the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with Bunkham County where we may share staff between the county and the city. And there's no reimbursement between the two entities just during this pandemic. And I just wanted to get a feel from the city manager as to when, when she thinks this is going to be utilized and what the reimbursement situation would be if and when we get any federal or state funds reimbursing during this situation.
Excellent. Thank you for, for the question and the opportunity to factor speak on this item because we keep using the term unprecedented terms. We are definitely the ex of unprecedented horizon and probably unprecedented-
In terms of the relationship between city and county and how we are working in collaboration and, and utilizing one another's resources to support our community during this emergency. The goal is to really formalize the action that you will be taking to ensure that there's clear understanding that if the city needs resources from the county, that we would get those resources without any cost to us. And if the county needed staff resources, that they would get those resources from us at their cost. We stood up, for example, just to give you an example of this collaboration, the call center that we have at Harris Center. That is principally kind of a public function, but we have staff that have been redeployed. As a result of this pandemic, we are having staff to do things that's probably not in their job description. However, they are skilled and they have the, the skill set to work in a number of other areas. And so this in a local agreement formalizes that, that, the practice that we are, are engaging in right now. Ms. Whistler asked about reimbursement. We are hoping that the cost, some of the cost of the COVID-19, I guess expenses that are being incurred by both municipalities will be reimbursed. If we work for the county and they are getting reimbursement for a particular function, that they would share those resources with us and then vice versa. We would do the same for the county. So that is only for the time period for this pandemic. After the, kind of the emergency declaration is over, this agreement dissolves.
So I think that's great. And again, I really applaud the two entities working closely together. I would appreciate just maybe once, every once in a while, if you would just report back to city council as to, as to how city staff is being redeployed and how much is being, you know, how, how many hours and folks are being lent to the county during this time.
Absolutely.
So that we just kind of keep, keep an eye on that.
We will, we will provide that information to you, absolutely. And the county will be taking similar action as well.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
So with that, I'd make a motion to accept consent agenda item P.
Okay, there's a motion to approve consent agenda item P. And a second? Okay. Any, any, any other questions? How can I make, do we have everyone on the phone?
All we have to do is call that name if you want.
I'm still here.
Okay.
You too.
Okay, okay. All those in, in favor of the motion approving item P of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right. Thank you. We have no items under presentations and reports. We have a few public hearing items, but the first one, a public hearing to consider a land use incentive grant for tribute development Collier Avenue apartments. I need a motion to continue this item to May 12, 2020. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, we'll say Gwen made the motion and Keith seconded it. All those in favor of the motion to continue item A on the public hearings agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have a public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance designating the property known as the Louis Muller Griffith House located at 65 Woodland Road as a local historic landmark. And Todd Okulachany is here with his COVID-19 beard to talk to us about this matter.
It's, it's a little more gray from the last time I had facial hair. But it's good to be back and see all of you here in person. As the mayor mentioned, the action requested tonight is the adoption of an ordinance designating the property known as the Griffith House located at 65 Woodland Road as a local historic landmark. The subject property is about a one-acre parcel that's located on Woodland Road in the Grove Park National Register Historic District. The petitioner actually is only the second owner of the property since it was constructed in 1920s.
Oh my gosh.
And the property contains a single-family residential two-story historic structure known as the Griffith House and a one-story accessory structure that is not historic. The Griffith House, which was constructed in 1926, is significant architecturally as a highly intact example of a French eclectic-style dwelling. The house is also significant for being the work of master architect Ronald Green, who designed many of Asheville's most well-known buildings, including the Jackson Building. The designation includes the entire exterior of the house, the interior of the house. It does include the accessory structure, the approximately one-acre lot in which the structures are located, including planting beds, lawn, the rose garden in the rear. That's shown on the original landscape plan. So for this designation, including both interior and exterior, the rationale for, for the designation is not just the building itself, but also the lot and also the cultural significance with the famous architect Ronald Green. This action aligns with several goals of the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan, including Goal Seven, which is celebrating the unique identity of neighborhoods through creative place-making. And Goal Eight, elevating the arts and cultural sectors to strengthen and preserve heritage and history. The proposal also aligns with the city council's vision, the well-planned and livable community theme. When a property is designated as a local historic landmark, design restrictions are placed on the property and any modification to the land or structures must receive a certificate of appropriateness with the Historic Resources Commission. Thus, the historic character of the building, buildings on the site will be preserved and will help maintain its compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. In terms of fiscal impact, designation of a site as a local historic landmark makes the property eligible for a 50% annual reduction in local property taxes. And that includes both city and county property taxes. If the property is designated as a local landmark, the potential tax savings for the property owner, including the city, county, and school taxes, would be $2,645 per year. There is an attachment to this presentation that has the designation findings. It's about a 50-page report that supports our recommendation, which is to propose this local historic landmark designation and that it's compatible with the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan and the Historic Preservation Master Plan. As a certified local government, it's also, just to let you know, one of our responsibilities as a department and as a city to designate local historic landmarks. It's not a frequent thing that we do. We probably do one every other year or so. And this will be building our, our supply of, of local landmark designations to about 50 within the city. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but staff recommends approval of the designation.
Is it common for the interior of the building to be preserved? Because that, but that, like in Monford, that's not the way it is.
But that's an overlay district. This is an actual designation for a structure, individual structure.
For the particular structure itself.
Yeah, there's usually several types of criteria. And you can look at the exterior of the building. The interior is, is one of the potential options. And not everyone does that because it makes it maybe a little bit more stringent in preserving that, that interior. But the applicant did request that as part of this application.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? So we do have an opportunity for a public comment, and it was provided in advance of this meeting. Folks were encouraged to call in and leave a voicemail with their public comment. That could be up to three minutes long. Of course, folks can always email us too, and they do that frequently. But if you did leave a public comment, the plan, the plan tonight is to play all public comments received so we can sort of simulate an actual in-person meeting. We, however, did not receive any public comment on this item. So I will open and close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the ordinance designating the Louis Muller Griffith House as a local historic landmark.
Second.
Okay, I have a, for a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, the third public hearing item this evening is a public hearing to consider an amendment to unify development ordinance to update open space requirements. This, but for this item, we need a motion to continue this item until May 26, 2020. Do I have such a motion? Okay, Julie makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. The next item is a public hearing to consider an amendment to a previously approved conditional zoning at 137 Broad Street from Community Business One to Community Business One slash conditional zone to include an adjacent parcel for the construction of a new mixed-use building.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Todd Okulachany, Plankton Urban Design Department. At this time, after looking at the application and we've notified the applicant, that staff is recommending that we continue this item to the next council meeting so that we can work a little bit more with the applicant and maybe have them respond to some questions about affordability for this project.
I'd make a motion to continue this item until May 12.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Keith, was the second, yes, Maggie. All those in favor of continuing this until May 12, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next public hearing item is item E1 and 2. We will hear those together. Public hearing, this is a public hearing to consider approval to participate in the One Bunkham Fund by authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Bunkham County Service Foundation for management of an appropriation of $100,000 to execute any and all documents necessary to give effect to the resolution and then a corresponding budget amendment.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, and to council members who are listening by telephone. I'm Sam Powers, the Director of Community and Economic Development for the city. Tonight's item is, as the mayor noted, to conduct a public hearing on the One Bunkham Fund. And after the public hearing, to consider approval of an appropriation of $100,000 to the One Bunkham Fund to assist small businesses and individuals who have been affected by the COVID-19 and authorization for the city manager to sign the agreements with the Bunkham County Service Foundation for this action and to adopt the associated budget amendment in the amount of $100,000 from the general fund, unassigned fund balance. So what I'd like to do is give just a little bit of background about the fund. We talked a little about it at our last meeting, but for folks who might not be familiar with it or who are listening at home, I'll give a little bit of background. And then I've got a couple of slides with kind of an update because the fund is up and running and doing really wonderful things in the community in this time of great need. In response to the COVID-19 crisis, Bunkham County local governments and the other businesses and nonprofits in the community have come together to create a single point of relief for businesses and individuals who are affected by COVID-19 as well as a one-stop fund for folks who are interested in donations to help. And I know folks in the community want to help as well as needing help. And so we'll talk about ways for folks to do that through this one-stop shop. This effort is the One Bunkham Fund. And at the March 24 council meeting, council endorsed the One Bunkham Fund, scheduled a public hearing for tonight, and tentatively agreed to appropriate $100,000 from fund balance for this activity. So, and you're gonna have to excuse me. I'm gonna put my glasses on. And I'm having a little, I'm having a little vision trouble tonight. So a donation and application website has been activated. You can see it on the slides and at home. And that website is onebunkham.org. And so that is where folks can go to donate or to apply for assistance. Funds that go into the One Bunkham Fund are deposited to the Bunkham County Service Foundation, which is an existing nonprofit organization that was created by Bunkham County. They're managed by a non-person board that includes folks from local government, the private sector, philanthropy, nonprofits, and small businesses that have been affected. Funds for low and moderate-income vigilance who have lost employment due to COVID-19 will be delivered through Bunkham County's Health and Human Services Existing General Assistance Program, the General Assistance Program that the county has operated through the Health and Human Services Department. Who, funds who, funds will be used for the essential needs of folks who have been affected by COVID-19, who, who are in crisis, including assistance with utilities, rent, and mortgages. Funds paid to, funds will be paid to service providers, not directly to individuals. Individuals will be screened and will be referred to other Health and Human Services programs as needed as well. On the business side, funds for the small businesses impacted are in the form of a, a bridge loan of up to $10,000 with an initial six-month deferred payment. And the interest will roll into the, the loans after the, the six months. The initial rate of 4% will, will accrue and, as I said, will roll into the fund, I'm sorry. Loans will be designated to provide low-cost bridge funding to help businesses stay open in this time of need and to also provide time for businesses to apply for longer-term assistance through SBA and other sources of, of funding. The Service Foundation is contracting with Mountain Bizworks, a nonprofit community development finance agency to administer the, the program. The city attorney has noted that both of these sides of the assistance, the individual and the business, meet both the state's economic development and community development statutes. And, and as noted, a public hearing is required. So if you'll bear with me, we will, we'll, we'll talk through what's going on with the fund. Since the fund has been established, almost a million dollars has been designated and donated. This was earlier today. $975,000 has been received. Almost 500 donations, some large donations. And we'll talk about who some of those partners are. But in large part, hundreds of small donations from individuals have, have helped this fund become a reality. And if we think for just a second about the, the individuals and the $1,000 assistance, folks may think that a, a small donation might not help. But if 10 folks who are listening gave $100 apiece, that would be a full grant for someone who is in, in very much need right now. So every bit is important. And it's important for the community to continue to come together on this. So how many people have applied for assistance? As of earlier yesterday, April 13, the Health and Human Services Department has received over 2,000 applications for individual assistance. 775,000, or 775 requests have been processed. And 341 applications have been approved for a total of $138,000. This began with nine folks processing claims. And we've got now over 20 folks who are working on this. In terms of the businesses, Mountain Bizworks has received 133 applications, 26 loans for a total of $243,000, again in bridge funding to help retain over 240 jobs. And they're on track to approve a significantly larger rounds of funds this week as well. Who are our partners? The county, the city chamber, Mountain Bizworks, the regional council of governments, the town of Montreat, Biltmore Lake Charitable Fund, and the Ramble Charitable Fund. Both made donations of $100,000. The Tourism Development Authority. And again, over 400 of our friends and neighbors. Board members, I'll, I'll not read them all, but nine members that now comprise the Bunkham County Service Foundation, including our assistant city manager, Richard White, representing the city. That concludes my remarks. But again, for, for everyone, please consider donating at onebunkham.org. And if you're a person in need of assistance, same website, onebunkham.org. And I'll be happy to answer any questions now or during the public hearing, Mayor. I think that was-
So the, the loans. So One Bunkham is making loans to small businesses. Are you, and hopefully, the majority of those, those loans will be repaid. What happens when it's repaid in a year? What happens to those funds?
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that question. My assumption is that at some point, the Service Foundation would, the, the board of directors would look at what happens to those funds. It could be the local governments get repaid. It could go, you know, I, I think we talked a little bit in the, the budget workshop. I, I don't anticipate, unfortunately, that the need is gonna go away immediately. And so what I would expect the, the board of directors is looking at is as these funds are repaid, replenishing the fund almost in, in terms of a revolving loan fund. Our assistant city manager, I'm sure, is listening. If he has any different comments or knows anything that might be different from, from that, I'm sure he can, can text in and let us know. But that's, that's what I would assume is happening.
Well, I was just, I was just wondering if, if we had some sense of what the expectation was of what would be re, you know, what folks would pay back? Because obviously, some of it, people are not gonna be able to pay back. But it would seem that if we didn't treat it as sort of part of the $1 million, if there was a way to sort of treat it as a pool of money that really wasn't gonna be decreased ultimately or, you know, decreased at an 80% level or some, or 20% level or something like that, then it seemed like you'd have more money to dole out. Now, I realize that, you know, somehow we'd have to fund that loan program. But I, I guess I would just ask that they look at that.
Sure.
Because I, you know, I think we'll need more money sooner and-
And I'll pass that, I'll pass that along. And again, I'm sure that, that Richard and I would expect some of the other board members, like Kit Kramer, are probably watching tonight. But I'll make sure that we pass that comment along to the board of directors.
Senator, just three quick questions. One is, any, any, any contribution by an individual is tax deductible?
Yes, sir, it is. So thank you for that reminder. It is tax deductible for anyone who contributes.
The second point is, you know, the money that's going to individuals here, as I understood it, these are individuals who don't have other options. Is that correct? So, so, so these are, these are really folks. If you, if you're looking to donate, this is, you know, these aren't folks who are able to collect unemployment or have something else over here. This is, these are for folks who are, who are, you know, everyone's sort of hard up, but these are folks who are particularly hard up right now.
That's correct. And again, the Health and Human Services staff who is screening, first options are to look at existing other programs that could help. And so if there are other programs, they are sent there first. This is, in some ways, a, a point of last resort for folks to help them.
And just the final thing, I think this is more of a, more of a thank you. You know, there are a lot of, a lot of great partners up there. Also, I wanted to thank the Rotary Club, who put in $10,000 as well. And I think they're, they're going out there to try and challenge some of the other Rotary Clubs in the area. So it's a, I mean, it's a great opportunity for a lot of folks to contribute to a really worthy cause.
Yep, and, and thank you for that. We will, something else, I will make sure that, that- We will, something else I will make sure that we do is make sure that the website is updated. Again, if folks or organizations want to do something or want to issue a challenge grant, that would be really wonderful help for the organization. But thank you for that notice about service clubs. Again, if folks are looking for a way to help, there are plenty of needs. There are other funds that have been established, but this one is certainly a worthy opportunity for folks to participate.
Are there any questions or comments from anyone on the phone regarding this item?
So I...
Okay, so you're going to make a...
Do you have to open it up to public comment?
Again, we would open the public comment on this item, and I'm looking at Maggie. I don't think we've received any public comment on this item, so I will close the public hearing, and then I will entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the appropriation of $100,000 from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, to the Bunkham County Service Foundation, to be used in the One Bunkham Fund, to adopt the associated budget amendment, and to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the BCSF for management of these funds and to execute any and all documents necessary to give effect to this resolution.
I'm sorry, there needs to be two motions. One is the...
Who are you doing the first one?
...to stay in One Bunkham, and then the other one is the budget amendment. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, I'll amend that motion to...
You're not amending, you're restating the motion.
Restating the motion.
Yes.
So basically, you want the budget amendment first, or you want the...
No, the other one first.
Okay, so to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Bunkham County Service Foundation for management of these funds and to execute any and all documents necessarily to give effect to this resolution. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
And then I'll make a...
Okay, now you'll do E2, the budget amendment.
E2?
Well...
Yeah, okay, right. So I'll make a motion to approve the appropriation of $100,000 from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, to the Bunkham County Service Foundation, to be used in the One Bunkham Fund, and to adopt the associated budget amendment.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, okay. That concludes our public hearings agenda. So that brings us to our informal discussion and public comment. We have received a number of public comments. All of these public comments were submitted by 5:00 yesterday, and they were left as voicemail messages. They have been transcribed and provided to council members in advance of tonight's meeting, but we will now play them so that folks watching can hear the public comments spoken by the individuals who provided them. In just a moment.
Can we try this microphone? Would that be better? This center microphone?
It's, if this is going on...
Yeah, I mean, they can't hear it.
Who can't hear it?
They can't hear it. And probably the people watching can't hear it either.
Well, now, can people, so we just played our first public comment, and the audio, well, it's terrible in the chamber, so, but I don't know what it's like streaming. Can anyone get a feel from Dan whether the streaming sound is working? Anybody? I'm looking at staff. And Keith, say that again? And can you, you can't hear it on the phone, but can you hear it streaming? Okay, so what can we do different? Okay, hold on, we're taking a technical pause here to try to play.
Is it that laptop is very soft?
I've heard that the streaming sound is working, just not super great.
Because that's so quiet, I think.
You've turned it up all the way, I assume.
The laptop... Okay, she needs a new laptop. Can we put that in the budget?
Lee just said we can hear fine. Please listen to it, it'll help.
Does he have it cranked up? Oh, yeah, okay, so changing the microphone. Let's try another one then and see.
Hi, my name is Amel. I live within the city limits of Asheville. I am calling on the city of Asheville to open up the hotel rooms to help house people who don't have houses, who are vulnerable and on the streets, and also to open up the hotel rooms to medical personnel who need a safe place to stay and quarantine away from their families to decrease the risk of additional exposure. I am also calling on the city of Asheville to open up the hotel rooms to released non-violent offenders that used to be in the prisons, also to help keep people off the streets, keep people safe, keep people healthy, and keep people housed during this time. Thank you very much.
Christie, city attorney, so we might want to play that first one again, so maybe you can play the rest.
I'll play it at the end.
Hello, my name is Mel. I live in Asheville. I am calling to add to the request that the city council pressures the TDA to use whatever funding is available, or to use city council money to pay to house people in the 8,000 hotel rooms that we have available right now. It's completely inhumane to let people just live in the streets, or to put them in a hallway six feet apart where everyone's still breathing the same air. It's inhumane, it's unjust, and any city that grants itself some kind of progressive playground needs to do better. It is an absolute shame for all of you on council if you don't take action, so please take this seriously.
Hello, this is Camille McCarthy, living in Asheville. I'm calling on city council to press for the hotels in our city to open to the houseless, as well as domestic violence victims, medical workers, and newly released prisoners who need safe shelter where they can socially distance safely. I also urge city council to press the Tourism Development Authority to act because they have been dragging their feet over doing anything whatsoever in order to help the people of Asheville whom they exploit for all their resources, and they just keep saying that they have no authority to do anything, whereas we all know that they could, in fact, press for some kind of change and use their millions of dollars in advertising revenue to do so. Also, if the TDA refuses to act, we urge city council to pay for the rooms themselves if they're, and they could do so easily with part of their budget and millions in reserve. We estimate that it would cost around $1 million as a high estimate to house 400 people in hotel rooms for a month. Please, we urge you to house these people in safe quarters and use our safety measures. Eight thousand is sitting empty right now, and to help these people.
My name is Bethany DeWiler. I live on Brubard Road in Asheville, North Carolina, and I'm calling because I think that it is imperative that the city use a tiny fraction of its funds to house several hundred homeless people for a month in hotels around the city. The city's budget for doing this can more than accommodate it, no question about that.
Nick Laney, city of Asheville. I'm calling because in this time of crisis, we have an opportunity to offer shelter to those who desperately need it. Nearly 8,000 hotel rooms stand empty while the houseless, medical workers are afraid of transmitting disease to their families, those escaping domestic violence, and newly released prisoners are all in need of safe shelter where they can socially distance. I am calling on city council to press the Tourism Development Authority to act and to provide those rooms to those in need, or in the event of their unwillingness to do so, to pay for these rooms themselves. Draw from the city's $200 million annual budget, as well as its ample reserves, should make this both simple and feasible. I am calling on the city council to hear the voices of its constituents and to take action. Now is your chance to act in the interest of your citizens and invest in their health, safety, and future. Thank you, and I hope you make the right choice.
My name is Kate Williams. I live in Asheville, North Carolina. I am calling to urge city council to open up hotels for Asheville residents experiencing homelessness, or for medical workers who want to keep their families safe, or recently incarcerated folks who are being released during this pandemic, or people trying to escape abusive situations. There's a lot of science and statistics saying that all of these people who are already suffering in the best of times are experiencing just massively worse conditions than they were before this crisis. And there are, I think, like 8,000 hotel rooms that are just sitting empty, which continue to be a drain on our city's infrastructures and our resources during a time where they're not even being utilized, which I believe they're a drain on those things when they are being utilized, but now even more so. And it's the least that those hotels could do to house the citizens that the entire tourist economy hurts the most. I think that those hotels could be pressured into donating those rooms. I think the TDA certainly has enough money to pay for very many rooms, and I think if not that, then the Asheville city government absolutely has room in its budget for this for several months. Thank you so much. Good luck making the right move.
My name is Alice Martin Henskes. I live on Captain's Drive in Chandler, and I am calling in regards to the possibility of using hotel rooms in the city to help house some of the houseless, some of the medical workers, newly released prisoners, and others who might need some safe housing for social distancing currently. So I would like to encourage the city council to consider using funds either from the TDA or through the city to help provide this hotel housing, and possibly work with Homeward Bound, or ABCCM, or other local agencies that could give oversight to these, this housing situation. But I think now is the time to act and provide something that's safe and convenient and good for some of the residents of our community who need safe shelter. I hope you will consider this.
Hi, my name is Mary Monahan, and I've been a citizen of Asheville my entire life. I'm calling to urge the council to demand the local hotels open up for homeless population, medical professionals, people escaping abusive situations, basically, anyone who needs shelter should be sheltered in Asheville. We pour exorbitant amounts of our tax dollars into these hotels, and they should, at the very least, protect the citizens in this time of need. We need, first of all, it's about stopping spread of the virus, but it's also about being decent people and helping others when there's a crisis. And these hotels, all they do is they drain money and drain money and cater to rich tourists, and now is the time that they need to give back to the citizens of Asheville by opening up their room to shelter our citizens. And this should not be negotiable if they want to continue getting tax dollars from the city.
Hello, my name is Karen McNeil, and I live in Asheville. I am calling in public comment under the open comment portion of the agenda to update you on a resolution created by the Tree Protection Task Force for a comprehensive urban forestry program in Asheville. Maximizing the many ways trees work to clean our air, water, prevent flooding, lower utility costs, and improve public health is one of the most cost-effective investments we can make in our community. I am encouraged by the updates to the tree ordinance, but without adequate oversight, enforcement will be virtually impossible. If a position is to be added in this capacity, please let it be an urban forester. Our list of supporters for the resolution include Don Chavez, Executive Director of Asheville Greenworks, Ravenscroft Reserve Initiative, Sunrise Movement Asheville, Asheville Mothers Out Front, Cozen Old and Wild, Dr. Keith McDade, Susan Surtain of Treasure Trees, Asheville Greenworks, Stephen Hendricks, Chair of Asheville's Urban Forestry Commission, Sophie Mullenex of Blue Horizons Project, Keith Moody, Department Chair of Construction and Sustainability at AB Tech. As a mom and a nurse, I am compelled to also mention the research coming forward linking increased air pollution with a higher risk of morbidity from COVID-19. We, as a city, must prioritize investing in the long-term health of our community and recognize the vital role our urban forest has in our lives. Please prioritize a comprehensive urban forestry program in the 2021 budget, or commit to hiring an urban forester if any new staff is added to DSD. Thank you for hearing me out. I hope you are well, and thank you for your service to our community.
Hi, my name is Laura Pendleton, and I live in Asheville, North Carolina, zip code 28805. There are 8,000 empty hotel rooms right now in Asheville. Please press the Tourism Development Authority to ask and offer new rooms to people in need during this time of a public health crisis. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Walker Farrell, and I live in Asheville, and I am calling because I would like to suggest that hotel rooms, which are not being used currently during the COVID-19 crisis, be opened up to... the COVID-19 crisis be opened up to or rented by the city for use by people who are not able to find safe shelter in this time.
My name is Eli. I currently live in Canton. I lived in Asheville for eight years. I'm calling to make a comment about hotels being opened up again to tourists while we have lots of people who are experiencing homelessness and have nowhere to go with shelters closed. I think that the hotels should be open to folks who are experiencing homelessness, people who don't want to put families at risk because they're medical care workers, and people who've recently been released from jails who don't have a place to go for quarantine. It seems like the best use of space right now during this pandemic.
My name is Magnolia Wilson. I live in Buncombe County, Asheville, North Carolina, 28806. I am calling for urging city council to open hotels for emergency shelters right now. It's cruel to do anything other than that. Thank you.
This is the replay of comment number one.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marwika Straw. I am calling to ask that the city council either ask the Tourism Development Authority to use its budget or use some of its own budget to provide housing for medical workers, houseless people, and newly released prisoners in our city's 8,000 empty hotel rooms for the duration of the North Carolina State of Emergency. The Asheville City Council has a $200 million annual budget as well as millions in reserves. The Buncombe County TDA also has millions in reserves. It would cost at most $1.2 million to house 400 people in downtown hotel rooms for a month. We know that sanitation and proper social distancing are key in controlling the spread of COVID-19. Hotels are the perfect solution for housing folks as they have private rooms with private bathrooms and in many cases refrigerators or kitchenettes. If the city council or the TDA are concerned that they don't have funds for this, I recommend that they collaborate with each other and with Buncombe County. We are in a pandemic. Many more people will die if folks don't have access to safe housing and sanitation. Now is the time to act and this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the public comment for this evening. Is there anyone on, on council who wishes to make a comment before we close this evening? Anyone on the phone? Yes, okay, so that was Brian Haynes, Councilmember Brian Haynes on the phone, and Kathy Ball is going to talk about that a little bit. There has been a pretty robust discussion early on, as I understand it, with the EOC, with the Emergency Operations Center and what kinds of provisions hotels might be able to provide during this pandemic.
Yes, so, yeah, the question was, was around providing the hotels that most of the comments were about. One of the teams that are in the, located in the Emergency Operations Center is about housing the homeless population or the most vulnerable folks. Shelters have not been taking any additional folks for the past two or three weeks. So as the team continued to work on it, there began to be some significant issues around, that were around putting folks in hotel rooms. It was, it's purely a voluntary program, so anybody can come in and, and leave, so being able to monitor and check medical stats and temperature and things like that when people are in, were in hotel rooms became very problematic. There also, it was also problematic to be able to monitor to make sure that people weren't gathering in those rooms in significant numbers. And so that's the reason we went with the HARA's center's solution, because it did give the option for people to do the same as they would in a shelter, their temperatures checked. We're, we have folks there that are volunteering to monitor their vital signs for 14 days, and, and they do have to stay at the center. Once they leave, they can't come back in. So we've, we were able to find a solution that from, based on the recommendation from the interim Public Health Director, met all of the recommendations. However, if, if one of those individuals do get sick and are perceived to have COVID or are tested for COVID, they move into a different process. Excuse me, that process would then put them in a hotel room and they would be quarantined there until they got the results of that test. So it's a different level of increasing and providing the security for folks at different levels of vulnerability. So we do have a program in place for all of those. We also, I want to mention one other thing that, that came up is, we also have a program that Dogwood is partnering on to allow people in the medical and in the public safety to be able to stay in hotels if they feel unsafe about going home to their family member and potentially passing the virus along to their family member. So I think we, we've tried to cover the whole spectrum of individuals who are vulnerable in our population and could potentially be harmed as a result of this. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Haynes? So we, we did not, the hotels have agreed to put folks up for, that the, the emergency management folks up for significantly reduced rate. We did not approach them about housing the homeless because we did not believe and did not get recommendations from the Public Health Director that that was the best option.
And Kathy, I remember, so, this is, I don't know, what now, three weeks, maybe even a month ago, we were all invited to the EOC for a briefing, and several of us went, and we heard at that briefing that, and this was maybe a week or two into, it was very early in the crisis, that, that there had been conversations probably between the county and the hotelier, and the hotel community, and at that point, they, there were 700 rooms that had already been made available by the hotel, by the hoteliers for medical professionals, for homeless people who had tested positive, older vulnerable people who had tested positive. So there, so the city, I don't think, was in those early conversations, I could be wrong about that, but, but those conversations happened, and again, a week or two in, there were already hundreds, hundreds of rooms that had been made available.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments before we adjourn? Okay, so the comment from, from Shanika Smith is, can we get some follow-up about what, what the, the follow-up to the conversations with hoteliers around what services they're willing to provide during this, during the pandemic? What we, what's been asked, what's being provided? Get some clarity around that and some updated information. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, so we do not have a council meeting on April 28th as we normally would, that would have been our second meeting of the month, and our next council meeting is not until May, I want to say 12. And we don't know what our new normal will be, but we did, we did in our consent agenda pass an item that would allow us to conduct that council meeting completely virtually, so that is a possibility if need be. I'm hopeful it won't be, but it might be. So, so everyone stay tuned for that process to unfold, and there will be announcements, so everyone has a heads up about how that will work.
Yeah, I just want to thank the public for being patient with the technology and all and, you know, know that city staff and council members are interested in hearing public comment, and we're trying to do it the best we can in the safest way possible.
Okay, and please, everyone, continue to stay safe, and you're all doing a great job of paying attention to the latest order and mandates that are in place. Much of us have our face masks here tonight, this one my mother made, that you'll need to wear when you're out and about, and we hope everyone stays home and stays safe. With that, I'll adjourn this meeting.